Have a motion to certify the closed meeting was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, we thank you all for gathering. I guess we're right at six o'clock. We will go ahead and open this meeting of the Pulaski County School Board and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a young person to help us tonight?
Yes ma'am, we sure do. Thank you madam chairs. Pulaski County Public Schools and River Lawn Elementary School are proud to have Mathias Comer lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mathias is the son of Christopher and Kimberly Comer. Mathias has seven, Mathias has seven siblings. Who have attended and or are currently attending River Lawn as well. He is a fifth grade student in Ms. Connor's classroom at River Lawn. Mathias goes above and beyond to help anyone whenever and wherever it is needed. He will not only help his teachers, but he will go out of his way to help out his fellow classmates. He is always setting the example of how to be a well-rounded student. He strives for academic excellence and never stops working towards his goals. Mathias shows great character at school, gets along well with his peers, and even volunteers to help our preschool students each morning when arriving on the early bus. Thank you, Mathias. If you all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go anywhere yet. We gotta get a picture. Pulaski County Public Schools and River Lawn Elementary School are pleased to honor Sandra Cagle as the Employee of the Month. Sandra is a vital part of the River Lawn school community who in just over a year has been a true asset. Sandra serves as custodian, but her dedication extends far beyond the traditional duties as she consistently goes above and beyond to ensure our school is just not clean, is not just clean, but truly welcoming. Students gravitate toward her warm smile and genuine laugh, finding a friendly face and a listening ear. Teachers deeply appreciate the meticulous care she takes in their classrooms, creating spaces that are not only sparkling clean, but also conducive to learning, to learning. In the cafeteria center, uses this opportunity to connect with students. She takes the time to get to know each student, fostering a sense of belonging and making them feel valued. Sandra is proud Cougar alumni and graduated class of 1988. Sandra is married. I'm 1987, so. Sand- Sandra is married and devoted mother of four grown children, as well as a loving grandmother, grandma to two. Sandra currently resides in Pulaski. Congratulations. Pulaski County Public Schools and River Lawn Elementary School are pleased to honor Crystal Connor as Teacher of the Month. Crystal is a fifth grade teacher at River Lawn and a model of collaboration and leadership. She works closely with her colleagues to create supportive learning environment where all students can succeed. Her willingness to help her teammates and her leadership role in the academic team demonstrates her commitment to the success of all students. Crystal is an exceptional teacher whose hard work and dedication ensure students receive what they need. Crystal lives in Pulaski County with her husband, Chris, and daughter Evelyn. Crystal is also a PCHS graduate, as well as a Raffa University alumni. She is in her 16th year of teaching for the county and is loving her time at River Lawn Elementary School. If Crystal is not teaching, then she is spending time with her family. Her family loves to spend time outside, usually camping on the weekends, that sounds like fun. Away from everything, right? And she loves to read in her spare time. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Shelton to come forward, please. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County School Board would like to recognize Charles Chuck Shelton as Pulaski County Schools Teacher of the Year for the 24-25 school year. Mr. Shelton has been a teacher with Pulaski County Public Schools for 27 years, all at the middle school level. He has taught science, civics, math eight, and algebra over the years. He currently teaches math eight and algebra one. A fellow teacher shared with, shared that Mr. Shelton goes above and beyond in efforts to help students. She shared that he goes to night school to offer math tutoring to students without even being asked. He also stays after school to help students with math whenever needed. Mr. Shelton is married to Tracy and they have a son, Micah. He most enjoys spending his time with his family and working out. The most rewarding part of being a teacher to him is spending quality time with the student and people in general. Mr. Shelton is now in the running for the Region Seven and potentially the Teacher of the Year, the Virginia Teacher of the Year Award at the state level. We are certainly very proud of Mr. Shelton and are grateful for his talent skills as an outstanding teacher in PCPS and wish him the best, of luck during his Region Seven and State Teacher of the Year selection process. Congratulations, Mr. Shelton. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to announce our March Senior of the Month, Madeline Rebecca Legg. Madeline is the daughter of Matt and Christie Legg of Dublin. Madeline has consistently proven herself to be an outstanding leader, not only this year, but also during the previous years, even while still a junior. Her leadership style is built on foundation of positivity and encouragement, always uplifting those around her. Her ability to inspire others and create an environment of support and camaraderie is truly remarkable. Regardless of the challenges or tasks presented to her, Madeline can be relied upon to give her best effort, ensuring successes in every situation. In her life, Madeline has faced significant adversity, yet she has always, she has always approached these challenges with incredible grace, resiliency, and determination. Her ability to preserve in the face of difficulty serves as a true testament to her character. She is a role model to her peers, demonstrating what it means to be strong, compassionate, and dedicated. One of the qualities that sets Madeline apart is her creativity. Whether it's a problem solving or bringing new ideas to life, her creativity shines through in every way. During her free time, Madeline enjoys hanging out with her friends and family. She also is a huge musical fan. Upon graduation, Madeline plans to attend Virginia Tech to attain a degree in business. Congratulations and well done. So we have some wonderful up and coming basketball players. Pulaski County Public Schools was well represented by the Elks Hoop Shoot State Competition last weekend in Northern Virginia. In the eight and nine boys category, we had a state runner-up Tyson Vaughn from Snowville Elementary School. Is Tyson here, all right? Tyson, you just stay up here with us, all right? In the eight and nine girls division, we have a state champion Mallory Questionberry from Chrysler Elementary. In the ten and eleven girls division, we have a state runner-up with Lacey Morris also from Chrysler Elementary. And in the 12 to 13 boys division, we have a state champion in Braden Grubb from Pulaski County Middle School. These students had to win three different tournaments, one at the local level, one at the regional level, and also at the state level. And now the two winners, our state champions, have qualified for the national championships. We wish you the best of luck. We also have some wonderful student athletes with us tonight. Pulaski County High School's track and field team delivered an outstanding performance at the VHSL Class Three State Indoor Championships held at the Liberty University Indoor Track Complex. The leading 10, Nadia Jackson, Johnny Anderson, Cole Boone, Tanner Linkus, Aiden Moore, Bryant Nottingham, Caleb Sartan, Ania Slaughter, Jackson Squires, and Tanner Tony showcased their talents, resiliency, and record-breaking abilities on the big stage. Record-breaking performances. Cole Boone, come on up, Cole. Cole Boone made history by shattering the all-time national record in the 1,000 meters with a blistering time of two minutes, 20 seconds, 20 minutes, uh, two minutes, 20 and 14, surpassing the previous mark of 2:22:28 set in 2009. Wow. Cole also finished 12 seconds ahead of second place. And I believe you have a national event coming up here soon, don't you? We wish you the best of luck at that. Aiden Moore dominated the shot put, launching a throw of 56.02 to set a new Class Three indoor state track meet record. Morris. Aiden threw the shot three feet more than his personal best and seven feet further than second place. I think you peaked at the right time. Other standout finishes, Nadia Jackson cleared five feet in the high jump, earning second place with a new personal record. Tanner Linkus powered through the 500 meter, securing a fourth place with a personal best of 106.38. Really good. Caleb Sartan delivered a strong performance in the 55 meters, setting a new personal record of 6.66. And Ania Slaughter placed eighth in the shot put with a throw of 44.6 and a half. Relay team excellence, the boys' four-by-four hundred meter relay team finished 10th, just shy, just shy of scoring, and that was Bryant Nottingham, Jackson Squires, Tanner Linkus, and Cole Boone, who set a personal record of 3:34:23, just 10 seconds shy of breaking the school record. Very impressive. The boys' four-by-two hundred meter relay team faced some setbacks with the baton exchanges, but remained competitive throughout the race. With only four athletes scoring points, the boys' team finished seventh in a three-way tie out of 36 teams. Congratulations. Pulaski County's leading 10 have proven themselves as some of the strongest competitors in the state, setting records and making history. Their hard work, determination, and dedication to the track and field continue to bring Cougar pride to their school and our community. Well done, well done, everybody. Obviously, we have some wonderful staff and students.
Yes.
In Pulaski County.
Strong students, too, and talented. All right, our student representative update, is Jeremiah with us tonight? Yes, he is.
Good evening, chair. Mr. Graham, the board. So today, I just want to start off by saying about our school's safety. So following today, we had our tornado drill. So that means we complete our lockdown drill and tornado drill. So it just happens, if those events happen, I pray to God they don't, but if they do, our students will know exactly what to do during those types of situations. And then following after that, our weapons detection, there's, I think they're still doing well, and I'm, I'm not hearing much feedback from students, so I think they're kind of getting adapted to it and used to it. So that's great. I think that's great for students, is kind of like a normal thing to them now, so it's just not even a bother to them. And then following that, I would say that the senior letters to families are coming soon. So these will involve dates and events that are coming up that are important to our senior parents and our seniors as well. A new thing that I've thought of, I've learned about was our Athlete Scholar Stole, which is cool because it's recognized our athletes who's completed three-plus varsity years and are, and have higher than a 3.6 GPA. So in order to do that, so for me, I completed three years of varsity basketball, my 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Others could do two years of baseball, one year of football, or two years of basketball, one year of tennis. Either way, you have to have three-plus years of varsity sports and a higher than 3.6 GPA. And I just think that's great because it really honors our athletes of what they do in the class and on the field or on the court. And then another thing is parent teacher conferences are coming up this week, the next week, Thursday and Friday, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Next Thursday and Friday. So it's important that we get our community to know about our parent teacher conferences and how important our, our parents actually have in our students' academic success. Because for me, my mom is, if not the main reason that I have all these in school.
Is she here?
No, she's not here. She didn't, she didn't come.
Did you just tell on yourself, is she doing your work?
No. If she did my calculus, it's, it wouldn't be that bad. It wouldn't be pretty. Don't tell her I said that, ma'am. But it is important that parents know how much of a vital role they play to our students' academic successes. And then just kind of like a request or something, my, one of my teachers brought up that this, I want to say this climate survey was put out to our students, teachers, and whoever else it may be, about how, like, how the community, how people can get to know, like, what our high school is doing throughout the community or whatnot. And the idea that she had, and I guess the rest of the math department had, was that we have a digital sign outside our school, just like the middle school has. And I know, like, budget might be tight and those things are probably really expensive, but I would like for our school to have one so people can know, like, what events are going on, or what we're doing for this week or whatnot. And then I guess another thing that would tie into that is where that sign would go, because to me, if we put it out, like, right in front of our school where the other one is, not enough people would see it, I feel like. But if we moved it down to, like, the intersection where that red light is beside the church, if the church will let us put it there, I think a lot more people will see it passing by and turn it into the school or turn it out of the school. And I think that would just help our community be more aware of what's happening at the high school. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jeremiah, have you made any decisions yet?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay.
Next week, when we're out of school, we are going to visit Anderson, it's a college in South Carolina.
Yes.
That looking forward to it. So I'm going to have a visit.
Oh, that's outstanding. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. All right, it's at this time, we will recognize citizens. It's our first public comment session. This is for persons who wish to address the board regarding items that are on the agenda tonight. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for research, who may report back to the school board or at a subsequent meeting or through other communication. If you wish to comment about individual employees or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed during an open school board meeting. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any individuals wishing to address the board relative to tonight's agenda? All right, there'll be another period at the end. Okay, approval of our minutes. Do I have a? Motion to approve the minutes from the February 4th budget work session and the February 18th regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. We've all had an opportunity to look over the agenda for tonight and the subsequent attachments. May I get a motion that we approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, everybody has had a chance to look over the bills to be paid and our personnel list. There's also a matter of the sale of surplus property. Is that part of the consent agenda tonight?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Has everybody had a chance to review that?
Mm-hmm.
If everybody's in agreement, gives consent, can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into our instructional focus to the, for tonight, which is on special education. And Dr. Polchel, I'll turn it over to you.
And you're planning an update or the PDF? Okay.
Mr. Graham, madam chair, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to.
to come and present to you tonight. First part of the presentation is going to be the annual plan or the grant. Grant, there you go. It's going to be a long night. The grant application for the 611 grant, which is the large grant that funds special education through the federal Department of Ed. And the small grant is the 619, which funds pre-K through the Department of Ed for special education. So I took excerpts out of the annual plan, and when I was going back and trying to reference page numbers for you, I realized the annual plan's page numbers don't make any sense. So if you'll turn past all of the boilerplate information, you'll see the implementation narrative for 611, where you can look at the PowerPoint, it would be page 17 of the packet. This is simply saying that we have implemented the annual plan from '23, '24 with fidelity as it was written. Typically, we use that to educate students from age 2 to 21 inclusive. We use it for child time practices so that we help identify and locate students with disabilities and need services. And then we utilize it also for offering the continuum of services in the least restrictive environment. The rest of the plan gives more detail as how we do that, but the implementation narrative is required to say that we did that with fidelity previously. You'll see more specifics as to what that information or that money went to, so extra-duty wages, supplemental services, salaries, professional development. It's a long litany. Typically, the biggest piece of our budget goes to personnel, and you'll see that when we get to the budget for this year. The next piece is the maintenance of effort. The maintenance of effort is calculated using the projected budget numbers and the ADM or the daily membership. And we have to show each year that we are not decreasing in our effort. I guess I should put it, not decreasing in our monies that we're using to educate students with disabilities. So this is simply a test that we have to go through. Morgan helps me calculate it, provides me with numbers. And we have to make sure that we hit this every year or that we meet one of the three exceptions. The next slide is proportionate set-aside. The proportionate set-aside is money that is set aside out of the annual plan for services to students who are either homeschooled or private school. And when I say private school, I'm meaning parentally-placed private schools. So for example, Valley Harvest, Mayflower, in our catchment areas, so those would be served. Right now, we have three students who are taking advantage of services at their schools. And those three students, the funding from the set-aside is how we pay for their services. Typically, we have one of our service providers go there, it's usually speech, and we are investigating having a contractor go so that we can keep better track of the hours and the money and how it's spent there, because otherwise it just comes out of salary if it's one of our posts. But this would also allow us to focus more on the students in the school and then have someone else who's focusing on those students in private school. Gives us a little more flexibility. The next part is the grant request. This is the large grant, so the total request is 1.17 million. This is slightly down from previous years. If you look, we're looking at $580,000 for salaries. That's roughly 20 paras and six professional staff, so your community-based teacher, 50% of the coordinators pay, specialists for the different schools, elementary, pre-K, and middle school, and then, I know I'm missing something. An SLP has been paid out of this previously. The benefits, the fringe benefits that's going to be there, FICA and insurance cost purchase services are going to be things like Virginia IP, software, things that we need for operation. So there are things like, one of our materials which goes down to 6,000 is TeachTown. It's a standalone computerized system that our students with adaptive needs can use to learn the VSOLs, which are the essentialized standards or the aligned standards. Other services is typically going to be things that we have to outsource, that we would need, like OT, PT, Vision, excuse me, not OT, we have two OTs, PT and Vision typically. We do have a couple of students who require music therapy in their IPs, and that's all. There is no capital outlay for this year out of the large grant. The narrative is going to give you more detail in how each one is broken down by funding category and by object code. And then at the bottom, you'll see where we talk about laptops and purchases. Anything that costs more than $5,000 whereas an electronic device that has to be inventoried has to be specifically called out. So every year, we put in replacement cycle for laptops for special education staff, iPads for accommodations and things of that nature. We're also looking at telecommunications devices. What we have figured out this year is that a number of our community-based folks who, like physical psychs, the community-based teacher, the coordinators, when they're on the road and they're traveling, they have to call parents, they're using their personal cellphones. So in talking with Lincoln, we can help get relatively inexpensive telecommunications devices and pay those bills out of the annual plan to make sure that they have devices and are not using their personal cellphones. The small grant is by far the easiest, it's $36,000, it all goes to salaries. There is a stipend that is paid typically for our teachers who are pre-K teachers, they are ECSC, VPI teachers. So what that means is they are special education teachers who hold a dual certification for preschool. It's like a pre-K through third or a pre-K through fifth. Those teachers, in addition to the VPI classroom that they run, which can anywhere from 16 to 20 children, also case manage. No other teachers are asked to do that, so we provide them a stipend for each child that's on their caseload to cover that and to show some understanding that they do a little more than the average pre-K teacher does. And next is, just if you have any questions regarding the annual plan itself. So next month, it will be an action item, we'll need to vote on it so that it can be submitted to the Department of Ed for request in May. So I will present it again then. I'll move along to our numbers, because I know you all love numbers just as much as I do. Our first slide is going to talk about the unduplicated child count. And what that means is how many kids we have that don't have two disabilities. So when you're talking about child count, a child can count two or three times, depending on whether or not they have a secondary and a tertiary disability. So what does that mean? Let's say that I have a child that has a learning disability that is the primary driver for why the child is special ed, but then they also have a speech and language impairment. So your learning disability would be your primary, and your secondary would be your speech and language impairment. You could also have a tertiary disability, you have a student that has other health impairment, SLD and SLI. It's rare, but it does happen. So when you're talking about that, the child with three disabilities can count three times. So when they're saying it's the unduplicated, this is simply the child, the number of children who are identified, period, whether they're secondary, primary, or tertiary. You're also seeing the number, the percentage of services and the numbers. I think what's most important from this is to notice where the kids are based on percentages in the time and then the variance from one year to the next. If you look, the variance is roughly, where did I write it down? Roughly, I cannot do math on this. No, 16 kids, I think, it's looking at, yeah, 16. So 16 kids, we've increased in size. This does not account necessarily for stride, so stride numbers are included in this, just so you all are aware. That's why you're seeing an increase over the space of the year. And then this shows where students are served. The continuum of services is represented here, so this is every single place where a special education department can be required to serve its students. Right now, the vast majority of our children are in public day school, which is like the high school, the middle school, or the elementary schools. We have roughly 28 who are out of district, three of those being private residential facilities, and 25 being private day schools, which would be your gateway, MINEC, and then there are some in RONIC that we utilize as well. BIA, which is the Center for Autism. We also utilize Rivermont, which offers a more of a behavioral wraparound with the CBA, support for behavior animals, things like that, more specialized than what a student might get in public school. When you look down the number of students in the regular early childhood programs represented, this is kind of interesting because it's not normal that we go down in the number of students with disabilities in the early childhood program. But what I have noticed is that we're seeing fewer students who are identified in certain schools, and I think it's just, it's one of those things where it fluctuates from year to year. An example would be that currently Dublin Elementary has children who are identified, but they're most part identified with speech and language impairments in pre-K, which is usual, and coupled with a developmental delay, whereas normally we would see probably six to eight in a school with a developmental delay at that age. Next slide. So when you're looking at this particular column, this is important because of funding and how sped funding is broken down. The first part where it says regular percentage in class greater than 80%, that means that they're in the normal regular education, general ed classroom with supports. So there's a number of kids by disability over a two-year period in regular education classes for 80% or more of the day. The next category runs from 40% to 79%. Those are the kids who may have mixed services, who may be going out for resource, who may be receiving pull-out services for reading or math, or they could have consultative services where they're getting pulled and worked with them on specific things such as behavior and social skills. Your regular class percentage less than 40%, those are typically going to be students with significant disabilities, students who need to be in an adaptive program where they're working on their life skills and on those essentialized standards. Why is that important? The further you get towards the end in that third column, the student-to-teacher ratio goes down. So in the first two columns, you're looking at roughly one teacher to 24 students. In the last column, you're looking at one teacher to 10 students because of the level of support that's necessary. This just gives you a visual breakdown of the disabilities so that you can see that we, our largest category is a specific learning disability. Those would encompass math and reading and writing typically. You may hear the reading, specific learning disability called dyslexia, and math would be called dyscalculia, and writing would be dysgraphia. Those are terms that parents may use if they sought outside diagnosis. Other health impairment is the next category. It can be other things beside ADHD, but it is typically a student who has ADHD or some other form of a disability that is a health-related disability that's been diagnosed by physicians. And then speech and language impairment is the next highest. That's because we have tons of little kids who need assistance with speech. Typically, those numbers go down from high schools. So we have six SLPs right now, and the vast majority of the children served are pre-K and elementary. So student services is more than just special ed, I don't say that very often, but I will. We also serve students with 504 plans. 504 plans are different from an IP, and then an IP delivers services, it has goals attached, and there's progress monitoring, where a 504 plan is more about accommodations and accessing physically or getting an accommodation to access due to some identified disability impacting a major life function. So the criteria are different, but they're served very differently as well. I thought that the interesting piece is just to see the comparison. The 680 students are served by special education teachers, case managers in the schools, and then the 504s are served by the school counselors. You can see that we have six referrals that are sitting in the hopper, 10 eligibilities that are coming up, and then two, the ISP or service plans, those are for students who are not in public school, who are in private school currently. This is our breakdown by year, these are our projected numbers for next year. So if you look, we're experiencing a decrease in at Riverlawn and at Snowville. And that's going to be important when we get to the next slide, what we're going to be moving forward. But there is a slight decrease there, and you'll see that the teacher ratios are higher. It also gives you the distribution of sped paraprofessionals. But keep in mind, our paras are one-on-one paras. That means that they have to be qualified for either medically or through a functional behavior assessment and a behavior intervention plan, a very rigorous process. And those students typically have that para until the need resolves. Either they get old enough to take care of the medical issue on their own, or the behavior finally evens out, is the best way to put it. We do have some students at the high school who require one-on-one. Those students are going to be students with significant cognitive concerns in the adaptive program, several kids who need personal care and personal hygiene assistance to be in wheelchair vehicles. So next year, we're looking at an increased focus on co-teaching and higher leverage practices. Higher leverage practices is just a fancy way to say best practices, research-based practices, things that have high impact on student learning. We're looking for professional development opportunities in both, and we're encouraging co-teaching pairs to attend the JMU T-TAC Academy in June. It's a three-day academy that a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher can go and spend, T-TAC pays for it, and we don't. And they learn how to co-teach together and how to create those plans, how to pick out what their most appropriate co-teaching system is, and then move forward. We also are looking at expanding the continuum of services. Currently, we do not have self-contained rooms at the elementary level. We had one this year, and it was disbanded because of staffing. We have had self-contained rooms previously at Riverlawn and at Kreiser. We also had self-contained rooms at Dublin Elementary a long time ago. These rooms would be used for students with significant cognitive disabilities who require the essentialized standards and intense levels of support with their academics as well as with their personal and functional skills. We're also looking at a potential classroom that would be self-contained, that is going to be solely based on behaviors. So we're having some intense behaviors that are flaring up, especially with the little ones. The goal would be to have them in the self-contained setting, teach them the appropriate skill, the way to control or regulate their bodies and their emotions, and then have them go back to their school. We would be utilizing the BCB that we currently have, the Board Certified Behavior Health, to support that classroom as well. Also looking at the staffing, there is potential for additional self-contained opportunities at the middle school. We currently have one self-contained room at the middle school that serves adapted students. We could also potentially have a self-contained room for behavior at the middle school. We also are looking at creating opportunities for resource. Resource means a different special ed classroom for on-grade levels, that that's what I taught. So it would be that the child, rather than going into a co-talk setting where there's one teacher in gen ed and one teacher in special ed, they're coming to me, the special ed teacher, because they need grade-level content, that they need it designed specifically for them and for their disability. The cap on those rooms is 14. From a very practical standpoint, having been there and done that, I would tell you I would not go above 10. 14 in a room like that can be very difficult to manage and very difficult to meet all of their needs. So we're looking at setting up those opportunities. Ideally, we would like to offer a resource, language arts class and a resource math class in the grade levels that are necessary. All of these are driven by the IP teams, and what the IP teams assign the students to, and moving towards the next year. Do you have any questions? That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, good work.
Thank you.
And thank you for breaking it down. I mean, it's really a wonderful explanation as to what does it all mean. No questions for Dr. Poulter?
Thank you, Dr. Poulter.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, that'll be an action item next month, this grant application. Okay, moving on. Next item under our information items. Mr. Graham, are you going to tell us about the American Exchange Program?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Lucky to have Jessica and David with us. I think, I don't see David on here, but I think he's here. Oh, now he's here. Got introduced to them from my brother-in-law who was at a conference and really got interested in meeting with them and hearing to what they offer and thought it would be a great fit. Unfortunately, couldn't be with us in person. Jessica's coming at the end of March to meet with me and tour around Pulaski County. But they have a program that I think would be a great fit for us. It'd be the first in Virginia. They have partnerships throughout the country, I believe. David, you're in New York, right? Or, I don't know, are you traveling? Boston, Boston.
Boston.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. But I think that they have something very special, so I'm going to turn it over to you all and let you go ahead. We have, you have our attention.
Well, thank you all. I don't want to go on too long. I was inflicted at a young age with that condition, that basis of the mind, I get too lazy to stop. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the work we do in the American Exchange Project, and then I'd very乐意 to meet everyone and hear your questions. My name is David McCullough, I am the CEO and co-founder of the American Exchange Project. The short version of what we do is that we run a first-of-its-kind free study abroad program, but it has a bit of a twist, in that instead of studying abroad in a different country, we send high school seniors on a two-week exchange to an American town that is radically different from their own. And two weeks is a bit of a labeling because we send students to a different town for a week, and then we have them host in their own hometown for a week. So they have students... So students from here, my hometown of Boston, will travel to places like Dodge City, Kansas, and Musquegon, Oklahoma, and Sioux Falls, South Dakota, while students from places like rural Texas and would go to Palo Alto, California. And given the political, cultural, and socioeconomic moment we live in, part of the purpose of this experience isn't to just give students an eye-opening, horizon-broadening trip, but to also help them get to know Americans from different regions, different backgrounds, different walks of life, and who might have different opinions on some of the most contentious topics of the time. Our organization began six years ago as a research project into what great big idea could bring the divided country together again. We heard during that research project, teenagers all over the country voicing a common complaint to a single question. We asked them, what's your least favorite thing about where you were growing up, towns large and small, rich and poor, and blue and everything between? We heard them say, I feel like I'm growing up in a bubble, and I've never seen life outside the bubble. And that was the beginning of this program. Over the last four summers, we sent one thousand students on a hundred fifty exchanges to seventy-five towns in thirty-six states across the country. The impact has been absolutely extraordinary. We've seen bias toward people who disagree with them going down significantly. Better yet, the degree to which I think people who disagree with me are moral, thoughtful, and kind, that went way up after the trips. Their likelihood of hanging out with people who are different from them, and I don't mean that just on terms of politics, but race, religion, socioeconomic, class, ethnicity, those up after the trips. And I'm the most proud of, on average, two point seven new friendships that weren't there before. We've also been somewhat of a media darling. We've had over a hundred twenty-five media outlets cover the program. We've been the cover story on the CBS Sunday Morning Show and highlight on the morning shows on Fox and Friends and Good Morning America. And we're starting to scale this program very quickly across the country. And what we've seen the first one thousand students do and what they've learned has landed us on the belief that this experience ought to be as common to the high school experience as the problem. And that's why we're growing it very quickly. Jeff S., my colleague here, is in charge of onboarding schools, and we can tell you a bit about how the program looks in greater detail. In short, we operate the program through the beloved local high school educator. And so when we say this summer, we have over six hundred students in sixty towns across the country traveling, what we really are saying is that we have sixty educators or teams of educators running the program at local high schools across the country. They recruit students, they recruit host families, they plan itineraries, and then when kids from all over the country come to their town asking money maybe, they usher them through a transformative week of cultural immersion, civil dialogue on difficult topics, days of service, professional development experiences, and then lots and lots of connecting and conversations. Those are really, really the big elements, and we're hugely excited to come to the Austin County and New Year for your questions.
Anyone have any questions, sir?
I love the idea. I think it's great to offer an opportunity for our students to kind of broaden their horizons, but I guess I'm always the white blanket. Who pays for all this? Where the money coming from?
David has that, too.
Yeah, David have the money?
Yes.
You writing this check, David?
You notice the bags underneath? I can't see you, but we're a five oh one C three, and so we raise a budget for a set number of kids from a set number of communities every year, and then we raise the funds for those students. So right now, we have, you know, hundreds of donors all over the country. Some of our larger donors are the Hartland Foundation, whose principals are Steven Spielberg and Kate Takshaw. So you don't hate to pay for AEP, but if you go home and watch AET or Jaws, that wouldn't hurt. In addition, we just got a very large grant from the Carnegie Corporation of New York, the Rockefeller Foundation, the MacArthur Foundation, or maybe R and I could go down the line, but basically foundations, large and small, individual donors contributing to make this program happen. And when we recruit schools in the spring, we then draw up our annual budget and then go out and raise the funds for those students. So there's no fee per service on the part of the schools. However, we do local fundraising in the community for the students that do it. So if there's a community foundation or a philanthropic individual in your community that you think would be attuned to this, we'd love to speak with them about sponsoring a co-owner student side of your schools.
I'm going to assume that the host families have been subjected to rigorous background checks. I mean, how do you pick them?
So that was what you talked about to mention. All of the work that our exchange managers do is aided and tracked and kind of assisted along by our operations team and our experience design team and our marketing team. So our national staff works with our teachers to do all this, and one of the critical pieces is both the background checking of host families, which tend to come from people who are already connected to the program. So if you do this, don't be surprised, a teacher in your school might be calling you a year from now, or if you could host some student from Los Angeles or Dallas or something like that. It's usually kind of a connection. So we background check them, and if that individual is not known by our educator or by a community leader associated with the program, then we also do a home check to make sure it's a good place for the students to stay. And then our experience design team puts together a kind of preparation packet for our host families, and we do some Zooming in the spring as well, so, you know, Robert can meet Jessica, his host student will be arriving.
I just want to add right there that David mentioned the background checks, that we do state, federal, and a driving record on every adult.
And what would be your goal in terms of Pulaski County? I'm going to assume Pulaski County High School. What would be your goal of the number of participant students we had each summer?
You know, really, we leave that up to you all. This is fundamentally a local program. Six hundred and twenty-five students got a placement there last week. If they read far enough to read my name on the bottom, they would know who I am, but I don't think any of them knows even I exist. So we, you know, a great program needs to know more than three or four students doing it. However, we're here to get every kid in Pulaski County this period. It becomes a lot managed for one teacher if you go above about twelve to fifteen students, but lots of our towns have more than that and have one or two teachers running the program. I mean, yeah, a little lot has had about a hundred kids. However, all of that said, somewhere between like five and twelve students is a really good number for the first year for a high school, and that I would say is also dependent on the number of kids in the senior class.
Anybody else have questions?
I know this has been...
It does, it does, yes. Any other questions from Mr. McCullough? You've provided us with a lot of links to additional information that we're surely going to go look up and watch, but I'd love the sound of it.
Mr. Graham, have you kind of surveyed the student population to kind of gauge interest, or are we still a little...
No, we've only, actually, Ms. Bowling and I have only discussed this, you know, really to talk about who could potentially be a really good teacher to take this over, and I think she has some ideas. But we couldn't do this for next, for this coming summer, so we're going to have a plan year, which is great. It'll give us the opportunity to really sell this to our, to those who would be interested in it, so.
Kind of get the infrastructure in place here. I mean, that's just...
Yes, yes. Well, I'm actually more excited about having, hosting students to come here and let us show off what Pulaski County has to offer.
Absolutely.
As well as, you know, sending our students to somewhere that's not as, you know, typical as a rural, you know, setting like we have here.
I think it's a great idea.
I do, too. Anybody else have any further questions?
And again, we would be, we would be the first in Virginia. So that's a...
All right.
Cool.
And Jessica's in Virginia Beach, so she's not too far away, and we'll be here in March to tour and see, see what we have, and so, you know, we don't really need a vote to get an approval, just need your okay to keep moving forward.
Yeah. I'm fine with it. Have any objections?
Best part is it's free.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Thanks, David.
Again, atmosphere, man.
That's right.
Well, we appreciate you all taking your time.
Thank you, guys.
And staying with us during the presentations before, and certainly look forward to seeing you, Jessica, here in a few weeks.
I'm very much looking forward to it.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, that was interesting. Moving on to the 2025 VSBA showcasing innovation award.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to read that to you, you can see that yourselves, but I do want to let you know that, you know, this was something that you all supported additionally with funding, too, and it's just, we're so excited to have applied for this innovation award and hope that we are able to have the VSBA recognize this program as it's been so important in such a short amount of time. We should hear, we have, we have to make you aware of it, and we need you, Madam Chair, to sign. I think I need to sign, too. And then we just are in the waiting process to see if we will be awarded, awarded the award for the innovation, the showcasing innovation award.
Absolutely. I don't think any of us were very proud of what the book has accomplished last summer.
And the folks at River Lawn have really, really worked hard.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Do they, because I'd read through it today, and I didn't see that again, but is there, is there a, I couldn't see a resolution or find one again? You know, what we can do is we can go ahead and vote on it if we can move that to an agenda item, just to be sure.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Okay.
All right. Budget analysis. Ms. Galar, are you going to come up and then tell us the good news about numbers?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Graham. Before you, you have a analysis of the current budget through the end of February. As of the end of February, thirty-three point three three percent of the budget year is remaining. The first page of the analysis provides an overview of the school operating budget. The next handout provides a financial overview of the other funds controlled by the school board, our cafeteria fund, school textbook fund, and school capital fund. And then following that is a detailed analysis of personnel and non-personnel expenditures for each department and subcategory within the major functions. On the revenue side, basic aid payments and state sales tax payments are slightly under budget at this point in the year, and we have started receiving our lottery-funded revenues at the start of 2025. All major expenditure areas are under budget for this point in the year, and the projected county general fund transfer through February is ten million, four eighty-four, nine oh one, leaving approximately six point six million, or thirty-eight percent, available for the remainder of the year. And at this point last year, we had about six million left, or thirty-six percent. Any questions?
I think it's going to be projected here for...
Yes. So I prepared this budget based off of the most recent Calc tool that we received from VDOE. It's based off House Bill, and as you can see, our state funds, combined with our stride state funding, comes to about forty-two million. And then our, we're projecting to carry over about three hundred and fifty thousand of our all-in funds. This will be the third and final year that we can carry that over. We hope to be able to continue our chronic absenteeism specialist position as well as our kindergarten aides. That came in way under budget. We had budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand for that, and it was much, much less, so we were happy to hear that, because I think it's been a big help for the kindergarten Also included in the expenditures are a three percent raise, our insurance increase, and that number might still change a little bit, but as you know, we're still kind of figuring it out, so. But overall, I mean, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape, and promised Jonathan we wouldn't ask for any more money.
We still have the additional art and music teacher there, and we are starting with the three percent, because that's what we have to have to access those state funds, but are still looking at four to five, too, to see if we can manage that. I think it's all going to be dependent upon what our increase in insurance looks like and the finance staff. Morgan just got these numbers on Thursday night with the Calc tool, so they've worked very hard to get this for us, but it's, you know, where it is right now and what we're, what we're, been sent, and at least we're not having to, we're keeping everything and adding a few things if it stays the same. So there's still that concern about the dissolving of the, you know, Federal Department of Education and what that would mean, but haven't heard a lot more from that, but it's, and they've done an excellent job of getting us three percent plus our, our needs, really, additional needs of what we have. So we do have that, another budget work session approval, because we do have to have our budget, too. Mr. Sweet and Chair Walters, and I'll have that by April first, so it's, I think it's twenty, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
We'll get this approved.
So we'll have more information at that time, too, but right now, we're, we're pretty satisfied.
Right. And we know that it's the twenty-fourth, I believe is what I saw is the deadline by which the governor needs to sign, reject, or line item.
That's right.
So we should know a lot more.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Galar?
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you. All right. Our National Ag Day, drive your tractor to school day is coming up.
Yes, ma'am. You want to go ahead and take that one?
I can go ahead. I don't know if we have a representative there. Our ag department, FFA representatives gave us a great presentation on this back in January, and wanted to draw attention to the fact that it is set for the eighteenth, a week from today, Tuesday morning. I know they have taken care of all the arrangements with the Sheriff's Department. I believe I last heard they had somewhere around twenty-two committed tractors involved from our area farmers, those interested in supporting this program. We'll be meeting at Randolph Park to start, I would assume, early, so we can get them to school on time.
What time, what time do we decide, Ms. Bowe?
I think it's seven o'clock A.M.
Seven.
We're ready to post as soon as we have the QR code to go to dinner.
Okay.
It'll be out on social media tonight or tomorrow.
Okay. Definitely everybody, put it on your calendar if you haven't already. It's going to be, it's going to be exciting. We'll get out there and ride tractors, if they let us. Okay, Mr. Graham, moving on to discipline and attendance data.
You can see, again, staff's done an amazing job. Our attendance continues to increase. Almost all schools at ninety-four is what, which is our goal all the time, so I know they're working very, very hard, and our chronic absenteeism specialist and Sarah and Mary and all those folks are doing a really good job. Those numbers are a lot. You can see in the column to the far right there for the chronically absent, those are down quite a bit from last year, so we're really excited about that. Still don't know what kind of accountability system that we'll be using next year, based on the assessments that we have this spring, but I think we'll find that out, like you said, March twenty-fourth. We'll know, we'll know more about that. Questions on that?
What does the chronic absent team kind of found successful in bringing that down?
A lot of incentives, and we implemented this unified communication software, which notifies parents when their, when children aren't at school, and it notifies them as to how many absences they are, and it does notify them if they're chronically absent, too. So they've really put in a lot of, at all schools, the incentives, I think, are the, really the big key for that, too. We are looking at trying to offer more family engagement opportunities. We have one that we are trying to schedule, which is going to be a big deal. What's that date of that?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth of August to kind of kick off our year next year. We have a really big speaker coming in, a lot of partners, a lot of excitement. I think that'll be great for our community.
Sounds like you're dusting off the ice cream-making machine.
Well, I think we got, we got Tony with the snow cones and a lot of other things, too, so. And our student behavior, can you all see that? Again, doing very, very well. The incidents aren't, you know, for the whole month of February, it is a short month, but the incidents are low, still making progressions with our behaviors. We did have some, some threats this, this lately that we've taken care of, and appreciate law enforcement working with us as well as the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney with that, too, but our behaviors are trending in the right direction as well. Any questions that I can answer on those?
No. I like to see it when a percentage is changing. I like to see it when a person has changed, shows us.
I think Debbie Compton does a great job of giving us this information and appreciate she, what she does for that.
Great job, I T., and great job, admin.
Moving on to Youth Art Month. I will again make this announcement. March is Youth Art Month. I know the Fine Arts Center of the New River Valley, which is right across the street over there, takes the opportunity to display the artwork of our elementary, middle, and high schoolers. If you have not walked across the street to look over that, I have. It's good stuff. Go check it out. March is Youth Art Month, the time to celebrate the creativity and dedication of students and educators in the arts. At the Fine Arts Center of the New River Valley, they are proud to host the annual Youth Art Month Exhibition showcasing student artwork from across the region. As we recognize the incredible young artists in our schools, we also want to take this opportunity to celebrate the fine arts teachers who inspire, guide, and nurture creativity in their classrooms every day. We encourage the Pulaski County School Board, right here, I encourage them, to acknowledge the contributions of these art educators. Their work is invaluable, and their dedication helps to shape the next generation of artists, thinkers, and innovators. Again, they will be displaying the artwork of our students, and our students have been nurtured and, you know, curated through our fine arts teachers. And there's some very talented kids. I suggest you get over to the Fine Arts Center and check it out. And we do value the fine arts in Pulaski County Public Schools, as noted by, I mean, dedication each year to add on to our staff, art teachers, and music teachers, so that our elementary students can get repeated exposure to the arts. The One Bag Challenge, you have so patiently waited.
Come on down.
Chair. Thank you all for letting me come tonight. I appreciate it. I'm here to thank all of you, the board, Mr. Graham, and the schools for participating in One Bag Challenge. It, it really makes a difference when, as we all know, when we can cooperate and work together on projects. And I'm really excited for the expansion of the school's role this year. We have a thousand-dollar scholarship for anyone who may not know that, funded by both the Board of Supervisors and the school board. And that's, that's just a great thing for, for kids in the future. And I think Ms. Payne is going to talk about how you get that scholarship. So, but I wanted to give a quick shout out to other organizations that are also supporting this challenge. The Pulaski County Sheriff's Office, both towns, Pulaski and Dublin, Friends of P Creek, Friends of Clayder Lake, T.G. Howard, New River Conservancy, the New River Fine Arts Center, and the Pulaski Library. We've got AmeriCorps kids in town, and they're helping us out, too. I think they picked up twenty-some bags so far in, in a week, less than a week, two or three days. The challenge began on March 1st, and so far, we have two hundred and eleven bags, seventeen tires, and other miscellaneous trash. So the challenge will run through June 30th. Each, each year when we start this, we get the question, well, why, why do we have to do that? Why don't, why don't we use inmates? And, you know, because sentencing regulations and restrictions beyond our control have changed, we don't have the access to inmates like we used to. We save what we can get for this challenge. They picked up Friday and today, and I think they got about fifty bags of trash. So they, they worked on Bagging Plant, Cougar Trail, Alexander, and several other places. So Route Eleven, I believe, as well. But that's why we don't use the inmates, is because we can't get them. And if we can get them, it's not consistent. But litter is, is a result of, you know, some of the carelessness, unfortunately, of some of our citizens and others that are visiting. And while sometimes it's unintentional, it's still, you know, it, it's caused by the vast, vast majority of people who are really breaking the law. So to participate, it's really easy. You come by and you pick up all your equipment, vests, gloves, trash pickers, grabbers, and trash bags, the county administration building. We can get some over here to the school board office or the different schools if you want to do that. Take a photo with your bags and let, get it to me. Let me know where you picked up and how many bags, and if there were a bunch of you, how many participated. Photos will be posted on the county's Clean Community Council page and other media, social media, to show that our citizens do take pride in our community. Bags can be left by the roadside, and VDOT will pick them up for us, but you need to let me know that as well, so I can get them, get them out there. Or they can be taken to drop sites with proper authorization. If you just have one or two, you can put it out with your trash as well. But if you've got twenty, we can't do that in the trash. For each participant could win a hundred, hundred-dollar Visa gift card. Both the school board, y'all will be drawing, and we will be drawing this, this, every board meeting between now and then. So for three prizes at each meeting per month. And our sheriff's office and, and the Board of Supervisors have adopted a zero tolerance policy for littering that's going to go from now on. So if we catch you littering, if we catch trash blowing off of your loads, contractors and things like that, and it's not covered, you're going to get a ticket and you're going to court. So we've been educating people through the social media campaign. I think Secret Squirrel was on the other day with some litter information. And, you know, special attentions will be given to uncovered hauling, unsecured loads, active illegal dumping, motorists or pedestrians improperly tossing out litter, and that does include cigarette butts. So most importantly, be safe if you're out there working and, you know, moving around the highways. So, you know, pick it up, Pulaski. Let's begin. And Ms. Payne's going to talk about the school portion.
I will, and thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. This would be the second year we've directly collaborated with the county on this initiative, which I think is vital for us to do, to demonstrate that we are mindful of the relationship between the school system and the county Board of Supervisors beyond just showing up and asking you for money every year. But we are thankful to be able to do this. We've come up with some unique ways in, in order to approach this. But I do think it plays into the profiles of a Virginia graduate, the five Cs, critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. And I think we touch on each one of those with reaching out to our students. Some guidance has been sent to our schools, and Mrs. Crawford, Brenda Crawford, was kind enough to make up these PowerPoint slides. So I would ask from our high school, middle school, if you want to grab that information and be able to get it on your websites for the students. It gives all the information about how to submit for a scholarship that is being offered, and that submissions will be taken from middle school as well as high school students. We gave them a couple options this year, but it is designed to such that you had to have participated in actually getting out and doing some pickup. And for the younger kids, we're not asking them to get out and, you know, grab a bag and go out on the highways and pick up. But we have offered to them a poster contest for the fourth and fifth grade students and the K through three students, a coloring contest, and that coloring sheet has been provided to the schools. There is information there about how the awards that we're going to be giving for that. And this will be done at a final celebration hosted by the Fine Arts Center at the Innovation Center on May 15th. Can't think of anything else. Would you like to offer any?
It's one of the most exciting times of my year. I've already went and grabbed my bags and started picking up downtown Pulaski, so I'm really excited. Sadly, it didn't take me that long, but, and I have, I have. So you're telling me if I pick up more bags, we get more money? Is that what you're saying? That's for another discussion. Yeah, yeah.
And there will.
But they have to be the orange bags if you want them to be picked up.
The orange bags. And we do, there is in-house right here, some materials, I mean, for the bags and some clampers and gloves, dropped off at the high school, a big stash of them. Be happy to get it to the middle school as well. You know, I'll be happy to arrange for that or bring it myself. If you need any of the materials to participate, let me know. I'll get it to you. And we do have forthcoming some posters that the county was kind enough to make up for us, so you can promote it at your schools. We ask that the schools do that for the next couple of months. And encourage kids to apply for that scholarship.
Yeah, it's free, free money. I get to just pick up garbage.
Really would like to see somebody win that.
Yeah.
And see what their clever ideas are. Anyone else?
And thanks for the added enforcement this year. I think that's imperative as well.
I was coming to school, to work on Monday, and in between the bridge or Exxon to the high school, there were a number of orange bags. Is that, was that part of the?
It was.
That's great. Because that was a lot, that was a lot of.
They have to get up, pick up like our exits from the interstate and this kind of thing. They're trying to work on that. They've got a lot of problems with it.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, probably takes precedence.
Yeah.
You know, things get out, and it's never gonna listen to you.
That's great.
Well, and as we'll see, segueing into calendar items, we have set aside, and we'll let the public know, that this Saturday, the fifteenth of March, we're gonna, you'll see more than three of us together out on Pepper's Ferry and that stretch, I think we did it last year, started River Lawn, work our way out Bethnal, some Visco, and up the median. Anybody wants to come join? Come on.
Also, don't drive faster when you see us in the median.
And don't throw anything.
Yeah. They're, they're, interesting times last year.
Shiver. Okay. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Graham, you want to tell us about what we have on calendar coming?
So we appreciate you all doing that and cleaning that area up. I know that Michelle and Deb really appreciate the community there, too. Thank you for that. We do have the end of the third week, third nine weeks is on the seventeenth. We sent out a soup's memo about one of the things going on, National Ag Day, as you have already mentioned, Ms. Payne. And then we have our two-hour early release on March 20th for our parent-teacher conferences from three to seven. And then Friday is a day off for our students, and I believe ten to two for, ten to two, is that right? Ten to two for our staff. And then, of course, we're all looking forward to spring break on April 14th through April 18th.
We're getting near the end.
Getting there.
It's coming.
Getting there.
All right. Spring semester field trips. We have some changes and additions. Everybody's had a chance to look those over?
Mm-hmm.
Don't think it was a major, any major changes. If I can get a motion to approve the spring semester field trip addition and changes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right. And we, too, are nearing the end here.
We, we need to make a.
Oh, that's right.
Motion to move the agenda item from the V S B A down to the action items.
Yes.
Yes. Innovation.
Innovation Award. So we'll move that. Do you need us to make a motion to move it there?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to make the V S B A showcasing innovation award an action item?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And now may I get a motion that we proceed with it?
Yes, ma'am.
And the application?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion. Just all over the place, motions.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Thank you all. I think we have a good shot at getting something there.
I think so. Absolutely, and it's worthy endeavor, without a doubt. Okay, future agenda items. Any of our board members here have requests for something you'd like to see on the agenda in the future?
I do not have anything for the future agenda, but I did just want to take a minute to mention, our community donated seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars to help pay for field trips at D E S, C E S, and P, uh, D E S, S E S, and C E S to Virginia historical sites, such as Williamsburg and Jamestown. This initiative was spearheaded by Adam Ferris, who owns Ironheart Winery. I think it's just worth a mention that our community stepped up in a really big way. Businesses, persons donating over seven grand to those three schools for Virginia site field trips. We live in a wonderful community. I don't let anybody tell you any different. So I'm super proud of that initiative and the care that was shown by Adam to spearhead it and all those who followed along and donated happily to that initiative. And I didn't want our meeting tonight to close without us acknowledging that contribution.
Absolutely. Thank you for acknowledging, for bringing that to everyone's attention, yes. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, that brings us to our final public comment period. If you got nervous and didn't want to speak the first time, and you waited till the end, now is the time. We will entertain any concerns you may have regarding Pulaski County Public Schools. If you'll state your name for us, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Peters. I'm from Draper District. Thank you, Madam Chair, and school board members, and Mr. Graham and Ms. Porter, for the opportunity to have a community comment period. I'm, as I said, a resident of Draper. I'm not affiliated with the school system in any way, except for, through my taxes and my interest in ever improving cultural climate in our community. Several days ago, I requested and received, thank you, Ms. Payne, the policy documentation for transferring employees within the district. I was surprised that the description of the action was minimal. I only read that the reasons for transfer should be reasonable and fully explained to the personnel involved. Now, sometimes an unwritten procedure becomes a habit that works really, really well over time. Sometimes that just kind of devolves, and sometimes actions can overstep the bounds of thoughtfulness and courtesy if it's not written down how the procedure should happen. This is what I've got a concern about. The policy for transferring an individual does not address some salient basics of civic interaction. For example, as far back as the Roman Empire, it was custom that no one was allowed to, or, or that one was allowed to face his accuser and to present his perspectives before the case ended. Notably, we find a precedent for that in the Book of Acts in chapter twenty-five. In addition, I've, I've got several questions just to throw out for, for thought. When someone errs, under what conditions should there be no second chance? When one is difficult to deal with, is there no efforts to teach appropriate behavior? Should an error of misplaced helpfulness be treated in the same way as an error of malice? A top-shelf interpersonal policy should help the professional consider first, the ways the other party can learn and mature and not repeat the offense. It should also convey the universal principle of the golden rule, that we should do unto others how we would want to be treated. P C F staff should know that they will experience an established standard of practice, rather than the uncertainty of unwritten procedure. And the students will benefit in an atmosphere that reflects the stability of clear protocol. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the board tonight? All right. That being said, I declare this meeting adjourned.